All right, good to have everyone here. Have you been doing all right? It is May 13th, 2025, and we're here for the monthly special we have in Clark County Mayor Commission. Got seven items on the agenda today, three that are questions only based on materials that are in the receipt of the body of the public, and then four presentations. So everybody's doing well. Busy time of year. The first thing on our agenda is the countywide data strategy, along with an update on the mayor's data alliance collaboration we've taken as one of many with the Bloomberg Government of these groups. So I just wanted to see if there are any questions about this. Joseph DeAngelo is here on strategy. Yeah, Commissioner Thornton.
Under item number two and A, B, and C, it says question only, but it's not. And then on item three, it's like, no questions, right?
There are questions for A, B, or C.
But go down to number, item three.
So questions on anything you would like to ask about this item?
Okay, about any, no, no.
On just this item right now, versus the data, item A, on the agenda for you.
I got that. So, okay. If I have a question, I'm gonna ask.
Any other questions about data?
Look at Joseph's smile. Now the smile.
Especially excited.
Nothing like having someone.
Ma'am, I'm trying to get. Some of your timelines, I just got the date. We all have a pretty good knowledge what some things might be completed. You got some things in progress on the data governance. You got some things that's in progress, could get some things that not started. You might start those particular projects, items.
Yes, sir. We're kind of homing in on when we might start some of these initiatives. And so just to give you a little background about how we decided to do that, we have an internal working group, about 15 folks in different departments. They have worked with an external group that got together at an open day-to-day back in March and went through priorities, an exercise, went through the five pillars and talked to members of the community about, you know, those who attended, about what might be important to do over the next three years. So kind of took their input and what we felt was realistic as an internal team. Now we're working on a time, a more well-formed timeline that will let us decide when to complete the projects that are most applicable to the overall place. Thank you for your question.
So I do have a question.
Commissioner.
Thank you. And I guess I'm looking at Athens, Rock County data strategy 2016. And I know that permission of Davenport and former manager Ryan, and it says mayor kicks off, and then mayor kicks off Bloomberg, the city data allowance. What is that?
So the city data alliance was, this is the third iteration of Bloomberg and Johns Hopkins that is really, it brought together 27 communities from throughout North and South America to work out, to meet, meet folks where they were in terms of the data journey, if you know, as I was recording, but where it was that they were in their processes and where they wanted to go. And so the first couple of months were dedicated to certain signing, kind of what our capacity was for within those five pillars, governing data, using data, effectively communicating around data and being more transparent. And so once, once we established a baseline, then we worked with an internal team set up by 15 folks over the course of time, along with two coaches from Bloomberg and Johns Hopkins, and then a third individual from an organization called Porchlight Insights that kind of worked professionally to just figure out where the gaps were and how to fill those gaps realistically over the next three years. So the kickoff was held July 31st. Before, we had it in the library, about 15 folks attended. It was just intended to get individuals excited about taking this journey.
I didn't get to go, so I'm not excited.
Sorry. The news is, you're on board now.
Okay, all right. Question, just Joseph, on this, what do you, is, is there anything you want to highlight as more significant in terms of what's coming out of this or a change that's going to happen that the public or us, would be most significant to us?
Yes, Commissioner, I'm glad you asked that. We thought we were pretty mature in our, in our, in the governance portion of what we're doing here, and we are. We're about seven, seven years into our data governance activities. And really what the data governance committee does is helps evaluate possible policy around data activities that we then, we then recommend to the manager's office, kind of a course of action. So for instance, we've developed a data sharing policy in recent months that I'm pretty excited about because what that'll allow us is have a concise way to communicate with our external partners about what our expectations are around the delivery of data after a project wraps up. And so one example is our interaction with the university. Different entities within this government partner with other entities on the university side, they have their own MOUs and data sharing agreements, and they range from like four pages in length to up to 32 pages in length. So there's a lot of overkill. There are a lot of resources expended in our attorney's office, ensuring that those MOUs and data sharing agreements are far off to par for our standards, for what we might agree to. And so it's a time-consuming process that consumes valuable resources, and I want to, I want to thank, I want to thank the attorney's office for their patience over the last few years. But what, what will come out of that data governance committee and the data sharing agreement is approved concise language that we can then present to an external partner, just to say, hey, when, when you wrap up your activities, especially activities that involve us handing over data to you, we expect something in return, that we expect it in a format that is acceptable to us, that we can then use to share with our, with our other partners. That sounds really basic, but it's something that-
Consistent and it's legally acceptable. Yeah, that makes sense.
And so other policies, you know, that have come out of that. One, one other example is a policy for sharing personally identifiable information. So in absence of really a lot of state or federal guidance, it's really up to us to do what we can to protect personally identifiable information from, from being exposed in a way that is detrimental to our customers, to all the residents. Something that we've been working, that work is ongoing, but we're optimistic that we can deliver a policy that's going to be updated regularly and that can, and do it, do whatever it can to keep residents.
Commissioner Thornton.
As we're moving through, and I'm looking at everything, and there are a lot of things that have not started yet, things that are in progress. When or how to be known that we're moving in this direction is having the outcomes that you'd like to see. What, what big balloon goes off that says, oh, we got it?
Yeah, there, some of, some of, some of these initiatives are checklist oriented, where we can say, all right, we did these five things and we're done. We delivered a data sharing agreement, and we have a way to keep it up to date. Some of them are going to be ongoing, and some of them are going to rely on external partners, like for instance, the university and others, that won't be within our control to complete. So we're, we're talking about educating the public about how to use data. We may not be the best outlet for that. We may be a good-
I saw that up there, yes.
Yes, ma'am. And so it'll, I know this is not a satisfactory answer, but it will vary, but we, we intend to knock out most of these priorities over the next three years.
I like the next three years far, and I hope you're hearing information in 2020 before we get to the next three years. I hope there's a progression of regular reporting as you try to get every year.
If I can just make a little plug, you can see some of this work already in action if you go to ACCGov.com/performance. That is the, the public facing, and that is, is backed by some of the data that we're, we're normalizing through this process.
All right, anything else on data? Right, Joseph, great work. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks for sharing the scene. All right, in classic city fashion, we don't have any road in this town that we don't like to change the names of. At some point, while you stay on a straight line, but suddenly see a different roadside. And that's the case on Prince Avenue, which becomes Jefferson Highway. And so we have Josh Hawkins, or Diane Jackson as well from our capital projects team, and we're here to answer any questions that you might have about the project concepts for upgrades on, on that roadway. Of course, it's a collaboration with Georgia Department, Georgia Department of Transportation, and then we have some sloths dollars to deploy there as well. So we've seen that kind of presentation. Questions about that?
Well, looking at this for the weekend, something came to mind, especially with Jefferson Road, nonetheless, GDOT budget. I know some years ago, I put up some type of barriers, Jefferson Road, of number crashes that we have had, and I did not, unless I missed it. I did not see the answer. In this report, and maybe not being this report because it's a GDOT budget.
Talking about medians?
Yes. So I did not see that. So if it's not there, hoping somebody will bring it to GDOT attention to take a look at that. It was several years ago that that came up, and again, I looked, I tried to find, I didn't see it. I'm asking, but obviously it's not in there. So I look at certain minds, I look at certain minds, if you all know Ralph Capwood, we're building 481 Singapore homes there, right on that, in the country club of state. Traffic is gonna increase tremendously. And there are some traffic commons, stuff in there. I think it's gotta be more, in my mind, based on the population, how that area is tend to grow. We got, we got medical offices over there, then we got a major subdivision coming up over there. So I know this was a sloth project, and I get that piece, again, I think there's some things that we need to consider are possible, and we may have to juggle a little bit to take a look at those things. Because what I'm hearing from my neighbors, from my constituents, is traffic is already a problem, and it's gonna be increasing more, cut roads, and then you got the bridge area in the capwood. So again, hopefully with the user group, I love you all, go back to the table, that we take some of those things into consideration. I know, Commissioner Link, some of that impacts our district too. So yeah, that's food, though.
And just kind of thinking about the component pieces of the report, that there is some mention of prospective lane width reductions and median strips kind of in that Catholic county line area. I know we've got folks from Public Works here. Would anyone like to talk just about how that kind of intersection signalization analysis happens? If you want to, or if one from Public Works, because of course, we often have new developments that are going to mean that the volume of arterials is gonna shift over time.
Because one thing I did do in our T-Spot project, I did put some comment in that project, but just looking at this now, trying to get T-Spot project, how may all that can be tied in, affect me together to get some of these things done.
Right. So GDOT has a project already, they have a PI number for it, and I talked about it a little bit here and in the agenda report. There are going to be five signal upgrades, okay? And I think the work that they did to develop this predates the Homewood Hills, and the, and the one at 23 on Jefferson, Old Jefferson Road. So I have sent those traffic studies that Lanning just shared with everybody to bike traffic folks, to see if that affects any of what we have decided on as a user group or must haves.
And just to the point, there are two more potentially, thousand projects.
And that's what I was talking about. Yeah, yeah. So Josh was sharing that with me, and Lanning put it out, I guess maybe Friday, with the traffic studies, with their, with their reports and everything. So I've shared that with Kimberly Moore, and we'll find out.
We have the traffic study.
The traffic study. Yeah, I have them, but I can send them to you, but they're also, yes, I'll-
If you don't mind, please. Yeah, but that's important. I mean, that's, right now, that's one of the biggest complaints that I'm getting, the traffic and increase in traffic.
Yes, sir. Be happy to see.
But you were also talking about some development of Capwood, additional development.
Yeah, that project has already started. If you go to country club of state, that project has already started. And that's gonna be 280 Singapore homes.
Yeah, I don't see any reference to improvements in, in the Normal Town heart corridor, Palmithe Park intersection. That's a huge concern. It has been for years. And, and just the, the speed going through Normal Town, where you have businesses right up on the road, sit outside Highlow on any given night, and you'll see some really scary situations. I'm gonna witness some wrecks. There any, any hope for improvement in that area?
So this project, the limits were from Sunset out to the county.
Okay, so this is just that, that end?
Yes.
Okay, and so we have a-
The other prints, the 2018 Prince, one, project 16 under the 2018, is, we've done some work with it, with the bike lanes and everything, and some of the, some of the improvements with Pop Street Green Infrastructure, the MEGs, One Wayne. And so there's, we're still working down our list. There's some monies left. I know that Peter Norris put in, again, under the 2026, the Prince-Talmithe intersection again. And we also did those improvements, that was sub-project two, we did those improvements for the crosswalks and the headheads at that intersection. As a short term, and it impacted that.
Okay, so it's a different project.
Yeah.
Commissioner Myers?
Yeah, I was just looking at that, too. I pulled up T-Spot 2018 there, but on 2023, there's like something like over $8 million in this bucket, right? So if I'm looking on that, on the PowerPoint up there, is the, there's a project, there's a place where you have the must-have projects, the wholly highly-wanted projects, and the nice-to-have projects. So am I correct in thinking that, I don't know if you can pull that up there, but that the must-have projects would be the ones, I mean, right now, that estimated budget conceptual is, is six and a half million dollars. So it looks to me, at this point, that that, there's a lot, that that's really all that one's gonna be able to do. What comes out of this at the next level? Because what we're, I mean, I'm looking at what the next steps on this, because there's a lot of slides and a lot of these things. So we're gonna vote on something on June on this, work with TPW to forward projects. And will there be more work on those? How much more work will go into, will it just be the must-haves? Where are we gonna get more work on them, or the?
So the plan is to start with the must-haves? Okay, just like we always do, right? Work, work those down. And then if we have, if we have monies left, we'll start into the highly-wanted.
Right. So that's, that's what I was basically getting at. That's where we're gonna go. So that slide where we have the must-haves, is really where you're gonna be making some project concepts from those that we'd be looking at. Okay.
So this would be the project concept, right? Approval. And then we would work down those. And then the whole idea, though, is that this whole 16 project set would be what you would approve as the project concept? So, so then this and/or future T-Spots or any other bucket of money that we may get can be used to forward these into the preliminary plan phase.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Commissioner Thornton?
Actually, I found it, what I was looking. But I guess my next question is, I was looking for your, your user group members. How often are the user groups meeting and involved in this process?
So we meet about once a month. Okay. And if I don't have something, because everybody's time's, you know, precious, right? And if I don't have something, then I'll, I'll cancel it. But for the most part, we meet the fourth Wednesday of the month, for an hour and a half.
Are all the user groups functioning like that?
That's how my user groups.
Oh, make it clear. Okay, thank you.
I see that the next step's at the end, it says, it's coming, it's already, the future is here for the consideration. Is that gonna be, Kelly, on the June agenda setting?
I think that's-
Not June vote?
May, well.
It's quite, you're considering on it.
Yeah. And just to quit on that user group, is that use, that user group I see, you know, some people who are on the Prince Avenue user group, but is there, there are people who are from, you know, they're the same user group or is it a different user group?
So it's a continuation of the 2018 project, and then the manager added two people from that corridor, the Jefferson corridor. So we have three from the Prince, two from the Jefferson.
That's, I was just checking on that. Thank you.
And they have been, the Jefferson folks have been on it, catching up, but they've been on it.
All right, any more Prince Jefferson? All right, moving to another corridor that has lots of, lots of changing road names. The North Athens area, of course, even graphically, kind of that area of study in the map, really kind of stretching from a whole road all the way over to Newton Bridge, and then kind of northward to the county line. So that, he Sanders here from our capital team. So any questions about this?
If I could, real quick, I want to take a chance to introduce Ricky Fordy, the project manager with our office, who's taken this project, could be here to answer. That's a good question.
Good to meet you all. Questions about this, and this is kind of another set of project concepts, but similarly will be advanced as dollars are available.
I mean, since we've looked at the other one, and the must-haves, the highly-wanted, the nice-to-haves, on, on your project here, it doesn't have any conceptual budget with it, where the other one does. Do you know how much, there another slide that I'm missing that tells, that it gives any kind of idea about how much of this preliminarily we'll be able to get through?
Right, so-
Oh, down at the end, there's something. That's right. But it doesn't tell the project costs. So sorry for interrupting you.
No, no, you're okay. So, so the list that we've got here, so many of the items, we, we've not gotten to that phase yet. We, we've got to engage engineering consulting in order to get this cost estimate. On some of these items, we have to do some internal reviews and, and bring back some additional costs for mayor and mission consideration.
Well. First of all, thank you for getting North Avenue on somebody's radar. Appreciate it.
Not North Athens, right?
Okay. Yeah, district not. I really do appreciate it. And I don't, and I, I do appreciate staff working tirelessly late to address some of these issues. So my question would be, if this comes back before us in June, June, there will be dollars attached to each of these. Will we be ready to look at dollar amount in June?
So we, we are asking for the authorization from Mayor Commission to engage the consultants so that we can begin the task of getting the dollars.
So the ask will be in June?
Right. The project concept is in June. So some of these, for example, the Freemanville, Freeman Drive, Norwood Road intersection improvement, we know we want to make intersection improvements there. What those improvements will be will be based on some engineering that needs to be done first, whether it's creating more of a T-intersection with a signal or a roundabout. And so those budgets could vary greatly, but we need to get the engineers on to do that. But we don't want to go spend that engineering dollars until y'all have seen these concepts and have a chance to weigh in on.
Okay. And then my next question is, I know lighting is on here somewhere.
First one, one first.
Oh, okay. See, I'm gonna scroll all down. Brad has been very helpful in, in keeping me straight and moving us in the right direction. And I do think one of the things we mentioned is, most of the people who are, that were concerned about the lighting, that is Jackson County, actually. So have we began those conversations to see if they could kick in before?
So we've, we've had some internal conversations with Jackson EMC about some, some of these conversations that are coming up. Based upon that sub-project, the first thing we're gonna do is actually study the corridor and make sure everything's working, in working order, and what can be upgraded without any additional costs. We're going to do that. And then come back to Mayor Commission for, for request of any money.
Well, I do want to take the moment, I think Mayor mentioned the different street names that this is called. This is actually 106 Danielsville Highway primary we were talking about, which is different from North Avenue. And I appreciate TPW putting up the sign that shows where things change. And, and saying that, this is the local government's stretch, not GDOT. So I just want people to understand, this is, you know, I think in the past, even myself, thought GDOT was responsible for the repairs and upgrading there. But this is our, the local government's. I just wanted to make that statement because I think that might be some of the reasons some things have not been addressed so.
Commissioner Link?
So I see that the whole road industry improvements fell down to the nice-to-have. When these projects were being considered, were they considering the housing that's been approved on that corridor? We, they're, they're, right now, there's not a whole lot going on. We've approved at least two projects, if I recall correctly. Was that considered the future development that is coming to that corridor and how it fell in the priority list?
So I don't, I don't think any of that future development had been considered. We know that there is that gap, and there's current development, and then there it stops there, Danielsville Road. We know that there needs to be the connectivity piece, but when we were looking at the program itself, we were ranking on how much we, we thought we could logistically do within the program. It's, so of course, once we get engineering onboard and we can attach costs to that, it could change, but we, we bring it to you for that, with just however.
All right, can we get a list of the stuff that's been approved recently, going to be built on Whole Road, just so we have an idea?
And one of the things to keep in mind, Commissioner, yes, I can give you that list. If there are developments that touch Whole Road, when they're built, they're putting sidewalk on Whole Road for their section. So that leaves more money in the bucket to do other projects. So, but I will get you that.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Thornton?
Also, when we're talking about connections, I guess earlier last year, or late last year, we approved the project on 29 McCullough, McCullough, McCullough Drive. And, and part of their plan was an easement that would go over to 106. Can you explain that? I, I didn't understand it that much, because at the time, there was nothing on 106. Now all this development is going up. So what's the connection between, I didn't know why they requested, or we approved a, an easement going from 29 to 106?
I don't know that answer off the top of my head, but I can get it for you. Because, I mean, generally, if, if the project that was right at the end of the cul-de-sac on McClellan that went- Because, I mean, generally, if the project that was right at the end of the cul-de-sac on McCullough that went a piece of the way towards 106, they may have shown, my assumption, and I'm guessing here, but I'll get you the answer. They probably showed connection points on that northwest end of it to, for future tie-ins. I mean, it's always been long-term for 20-plus years. The goal, another connecting point from the 29 corridor over to Danielsville Road. If for no other reason to make the accessibility for the people on Danielsville Road into that commercial area easier, as well as fire response times from the fire station to get over there without having to come all the way down to Holland back up.
But that sounds, that sounds legitimate and it sounds good. It just never, it wasn't explained. It just because it was just, oh, we're just building it. But the project on McCullough, it was a good project. It is a good project. So I didn't make no big deal because I didn't understand.
Very well of showing a public connection across theirs. Kind of like what you see going on on the other side of 29 where the north side package is and then all the apartments behind. And as those properties develop out, you're seeing a road being built.
Okay.
And that road goes all the way up and it hits the backside of Modern Body, which is the last lot to the signal at Highway 72 voils. Then again, you know, that's been in the works for, again, 20 years plus to make that connection over to 29. But it's going to happen as properties become available and develop. There was never a real desire on our end to go in and try to get that property to build it, but otherwise let it develop as it happens. And it would continue across 29, ideally, to ultimately go to Danielsville Road and that would be the terminus of it.
So in June, come back with dollar amounts. And if we're not able to just do everything on this wish list, will have an opportunity to pick and choose?
There's probably not going to be dollar amounts in two weeks when this comes back to you. I think where we are with this user group and these projects, had to get projects on paper first to get started. So that's what we're trying to push quickly. What you'll be asked to vote on in June is approval of these projects in this general list, and then we will start doing the engineering work necessary. It's very much like the one you just saw before. That one had $30 million worth of projects with an $8 billion bucket. So we know we're not building all those projects under this program. It's going to be the same way, more than likely with this.
That's my question. When this comes back, we're voting in June to approve.
This list, priority, and we'll start at the top.
Come back from at some point with the actual dollar amount.
Yes. We need to know where to start, what's most important. We start there and we work our way down.
No, I'm glad that y'all made that connection because I think for the public, just to know, this is in some ways the tip of the iceberg. You know, you think about how there's that kind of increasing residential development on North Avenue and then onto Danielsville Road where it meets whole road. And of course, that's connecting immediately to Kroger and Athens Tech. And so it's great to have the vision of being able to easily get from one to the other, whether you're on foot or otherwise. But we know that's going to take a while to come out of the ground.
Well, I do also think that in the future, the connection would be helpful for residents of Pinewood for the same reason. Being able to have access and not have to go all the way around, you know, come all the way around 29 where you could kind of cut through. So I do look forward to that connection or those ideas for 29, which would include Pine.
All right, anything else? Appreciate it. Thank you all so much. All right, we of course have four presentations teed up. And so these, we're going to get the full presentation and discussion. All right, the first of those is the evolution of the Leisure Services Master Plan. Remember, we put this in the budget a couple of years ago, wanting to be able to have a sense of kind of what could we lay out for the county looking 10 years down the road? And so we've seen kind of earlier bits of this around public input and now we're looking for. And Brad?
Just one, one quick comment, and this is largely to our presenters versus commissioners, but because of the volume we've got this afternoon and trying to work through this, we have warned all of these guys, 20 minutes is what you've got to work with. Our light won't go to 20 minutes, but when that light comes on, it's going to turn green and that sets your 15-minute mark in. So you've got five minutes. It'll turn yellow at 30 seconds and then red at the end. And then it's ultimately going to be the mayor's discretion to completely cut you off or not. But just to know, that's going to come on at 15 minutes and work its way through.
I feel a sense of brevity here when I'm going to present.
Mayor is accustomed to using light, so I will, I will leave that one to you.
All right, good to see you. Want to introduce yourselves?
Yeah, I'm Alex Bond. I'm the interim director for the Leisure Services Department, normally assistant director for Athens Corrales. And today we're here to update you guys on the progress of Master Plan Department. I'll go ahead and do our Shannon's plug at the beginning. There is a, if the public can always go to hpgov.com/activate Athens, they can see a version of this. And we have one more open house to talk about this plan with our consultants tonight at Lake Park at 6:00 p.m. We had two yesterday at Heard, as people show up, talked it through. But if anybody's watching and wants to learn more from the public, Lake Park, yeah, third floor, actually, fourth floor, I apologize. So we also, so our team here from Barry Dunn, we've got two members of Barry Dunn, we got Lakita Fraser in the back. And we also have Becky Dunlap here to talk us through and update on where we are. Thank you.
Thank you all so much for having us today. My name is Becky Dunlap. As Alex said, I am with Barry Dunn. I'm a senior consultant there in November. My colleague Lisa Paradis was here, so you may have heard an update from her. She provided an update on community engagement. So we'll touch on that today. But today, we're going to make a presentation about the update and where we are. Lakita Fraser has been here with us from the beginning, from kickoff, and really helping with community and staff engagement as well. All right. So today, we're going to talk about the timeline and process of the master plan, where we are today. We'll do a review of community engagement. We'll also talk about some of our findings from analysis of level of service and we'll really dive into community-driven priorities. So a master plan really is a roadmap for the next five to 10 years. And for the Leisure Services Department, this is an opportunity to learn how to better serve the community and determine priorities for future investments. We also go through this process. We collected lots of data around this. And we also realized that there's an opportunity to better define the role of the Leisure Services Department. For instance, we've heard a lot about, well, we have more fitness opportunities. Well, there's a lot of private businesses, small businesses that also provide that as well. So just to finding what the Leisure Services Department does and and also to help plan for future growth and development. And so by having a planning effort that combines thousands of data points from residents, we really feel like this is going to be a successful planning effort and roadmap for the future. So just an overview, we are in five steps, five and six. So right now, we're really in this recommendations, looking at goals and objectives, identifying partnerships, looking at how best to tell a story of this plan in the department. And then over the next month or so, we're really looking to continue the draft master plan. That's what we're in stages right now of drafting that. We hope to have that in June. But this started back in May when we really launched community engagement. And so we were out from May until September, looking to get communities' input on this process. We also did quite a bit of analysis, behind-the-scenes work, digging into the data around programs, being on-site, doing an accessibility and inclusivity audit. So there's been a lot of different parts to this project. But again, we're kind of in that final stages, which is really exciting. So we want to highlight all the things that they're going to celebrate with the Leisure Services Department. We do this type of work around the country. This was Athens, kind of is actually my first job after I graduated from the Moreno School of Forestry. And so to come back here is really inspiring to think about the future of it, but also I know how much impact it's had. So you can see all the different projects that the department has done over the last year or so. And from renovating playgrounds and making it more accessible to hosting thousands of campers during the summer, from doing plays at the Moren Theater, Leisure Services Department does a lot and manages a lot. But this plan is an opportunity to provide some direction and provide some priorities to assist with, with future planning. So engagement summary, so just a high-level overview to kind of paint the picture of who we reached out to. This top box here is looking at campaign outreach through emails and through social media. And so we rely heavily on our partners throughout the community to spread the word. We asked them, you know, to, we told them about the opportunities for pop-ups in the park or special events that we would be at or online project opportunities to weigh in. And we asked partners to then share the word. And so overall, we reached almost 80,000 people in that outreach. In terms of in-person opportunities, we had about 70 engagement activities. We'll talk about those a little bit more. But we had about 2,300 people were engaged throughout that process, which we feel really confident about and really pleased with that result. And then online or other engagement opportunities, so we did have a statistically valid survey as well as online engagement efforts as well with a number of different tools. So community events and pop-ups. So the goals of community engagement were really to understand the needs, gaps, and opportunities. Of course, we were there to listen and learn and to interact with the public. And we wanted to meet people where they are. We know that typically in this process, the people who visit parks and facilities or participate in programs, they may not be paying attention or have the time or interest to come to a public meeting. And so by going to the parks and setting up a booth, going to special events, we really had the opportunity to have conversations with them, especially those underserved populations. So we went to a lot of different events throughout the summer, looking at the Hot Corr Festival, the Latinx Festival, and the Star Spangled Classic. And so all throughout that, we encouraged their participation. We also went to the East Athens Dance Center. We went to the Grand Slam event, which is that teen event at the Lake, at Lake Park, which is awesome. We also did unconventional engagement as well, going to breweries, going to restaurants and asking people to fill out a short survey. This statistically valid survey was mailed to 7,000 households, random households across the county. The goal for statistic validity was 600. We received 619. This was administered by a survey firm that we work with often. And looking at the demographics of who completed the survey versus those in the community, they were relatively the same. So again, we feel confident about those results. So again, this is a summary side to look at all the different engagement methods and then also that those analysis activities behind the scenes. And putting those together really helps to understand the vision and those different priorities. We're going to do a quick review of some of our analysis activities, knowing that a lot of detail and data is in the draft. So oftentimes, we'll do this, this level of service analysis. We'll look at other communities around the country and then also locally to determine, you know, how is the department doing it against others? And it's really challenging to do benchmarking because we know no, two communities are the same. And that's one thing that we definitely kept in mind here. So in addition to looking at the data, we also dived into specific facilities that were similar to what Athens has. And so altogether, our takeaway is that similar agencies typically have a higher operational budget for a maintenance and maintaining what they have. More staff, more resources to support it, also more parks as well. One area where Athens Park County really exceeds that benchmark is the acres of parks for 1,000 residents. So there's more space, more acreage for residents, which is definitely interesting and great to see. So this, there's a lot of data on here, but I'll give you the takeaway here. So the Leisure Services Department has a cost recovery of about 11%. That's basically how much they're recovering in their costs every year. And so one thing that we want to point out here is that each year, on average, about $90,000 is provided in scholarships to youth in the community who want to participate in these programs. And so we find that this is a benefit to reducing the financial burden on them, so they're, they're able to participate. And it also helps to achieve the mission of the department around providing these opportunities to all. There's, there's a range of different discounts. I'm sure you all are somewhat familiar with the scholarship program. But overall, cost recovery is around 11%. We looked at park and facility classification, just to identify what all is here and what are the different ways to classify them. So there's some pocket parks, there's community facilities and parks. Administration of buildings, regional facilities and parks. That might be the London House or Sandy Creek Park, Southeast Clark Park. Those are those facilities that attract more regional visitation. They have a wide variety of amenities and components at that park. Then we also have linear parks and trails, some like the Firefly Trail. And then owned future sites, those are usually natural areas and with funding in the future, potential opening to the public. All right, so we did an analysis to look at who currently has access to a park or facility within 15 minutes, which in general is about one mile. And so you can see here everywhere in blue is an indication of those that have access to a park or facility. Now, this does currently include those facilities that are funded, even though they may not be open quite yet. Just because longevity of this plan is meant to last beyond, you know, this current year. And so if we look at the Firefly Trail, you'll see that kind of salamander up towards the east side here. That is where anyone can go on and off the Firefly Trail really easily. But when we looked at the data, it's about 35% of all residents are able to access a park or facility within 15 minutes. We also looked at demographics, just to take an equity lens, that's important, to understand who has access and if that differs. And so what we did find is that generally, non-white populations don't have as much access to parks and facilities within a walkable distance. In addition, seniors and youth do not have as much access to parks and facilities compared to adults 18 to 19. We also looked at driveability. And so when we do this, it expands greatly. So within a 10-minute drive, we're seeing close to 93% of residents have access to a park or facility. And now, of course, the, the distance gets furthered out and now the demographics more represent all of the community. But you can see here that there are some gaps here, those areas that do not have access to a park or facility within 10 minutes. And so we've outlined those different gaps here and we did an analysis to determine who lives there. And what would, what would it be like if a park or facility was added there? And then, and these are listed in order. So gap one has about 8,500 people and it has the highest growth rate. So that, that really is the priority that we've identified. Gap two, up in the northern area, that has about 2,000 people and the slowest growth rate identified. And then gap three, down in the southern area of the county, has about 1,500 people. So this gives us indication of if we were to build new parks or facilities, this is where, you know, that priority would be from our analysis. So we have a couple of findings here and again, a lot of, we had a lot of background work and more of this is in the draft. But overall, what our findings were is that it's really important to maintain the current parks and facilities where, as they are. And so being able to meet that demand through increasing park maintenance staff, increasing the quality of care in parks and facilities through park maintenance. And then also looking at other specialized skilled positions to align with all the different things that maintenance staff are required to do. Also looking at optimizing policies and procedures, how to be more effective and efficient, and also improving communication as well. Talked about level of service a little bit. For time's sake, I won't go too far into this, but I will say that level of services all around, looking at all these different data points of understanding how to make informed decisions about park investments by understanding who has access, where new parks needed, and where our improvements need to most. So there's really three ways to increase level of service. One way is to increase the connectivity. And so by reducing access barriers such as moving bus stops or promoting walkability, like we just talked about, we're prioritizing the implementation of the Greenway Network Plan. That's ways to increase connectivity. But there's also ways like strategically adding more park facilities in those gap areas or bringing parks to people as well with the pop-up park, which is that mobile bus that really helps to spread awareness. And also looking at transportation options as well. So next, we'll spend the remainder of our time looking at community-driven priorities. This is from all the engagement methods that we've heard. We have arts, nature, recreation department-wide. So you can see here, a lot of the art priorities, these are helping to form the recommendations, which will be more detailed. But increasing public art throughout the county, expanding art dance and theater classes, theater and performance spaces, and supporting local artists and artists. And nature, continuing connectivity through the Greenway Network Plan, but we also just heard trails in general are very important. Expanding nature and outdoor programs, adding smaller parks like pocket parks to increase access, and also expanding water trails and water access for recreation. In terms of recreation, overall maintenance, we heard is a priority. In terms of recreation, overall maintenance we heard is a priority. So increasing maintenance for athletic fields, but also other parks and facilities, general cleanliness and making sure that the user experience matches their expectations and that they want to continue to. We also talk about simple upgrades to park amenities. The WOW Playground is a great example of, of modern playgrounds, um, but not all of them meet that standard. And so just over time, continue to invest in the park amenities. Simple things like shade, um, at splash pads, especially at pools. The quality and cleanliness of restrooms and access to them and seating are all simple things, but they really do determine the experience of parks facilities. Accessibility continues to be a priority. A great example of that is the Sandy Creek Park Playground that's fully accessible. Just continuing that, that investment moving forward. And then looking at strategically adding specialized facilities. They may be multipurpose in nature, but we really heard themes of aquatics, gymnastics, courts and fitness. So overall for the department, just some key themes here. Increasing awareness, awareness was by far the largest barrier to participating and visiting parks and facilities. And so understanding how to increase awareness and getting more marketing support. Effectively partnering with local organizations who oftentimes want to work with the Leisure Services Department, but reducing any bottlenecks and any obstacles, partnerships. Bringing parks and programs to people, like we mentioned earlier, through the pop-up park bus as well as other transportation options. And finally, increasing special events to bring communities together. The department does a, um, several special events, which received great feedback. And so just continuing those at the same quality moving forward, they're really a great way to bring the community together. So some big ideas that we heard. Now, there's a couple of different details in here. We heard potentially that there is a need for an indoor aquatic center. Now, whenever we hear that, we would always want to validate that further. And so something like a feasibility study might be warranted because it's such a large investment, not only in building, but also in operating and the staff and the maintenance that would be required to upkeep something like that. So we want to note that we did hear it, but also recognize that it's a larger project, probably long-term and just plant the seed and continue to explore that idea. The gymnastics facility is also a big idea. However, that really is validated through, um, the current usage and also current conditions of the facility. So, um, within fifteen minutes, we were talking about, uh, the other day, the gymnastics programs fills up, right? So we know the demand is there, we know it gets used often. And there are not only accessibility issues with the facility, but also could really use an upgrade and some modernization as well. And finally, more sports courts. So this is more generic in nature. We have a number of different, uh, parks, specific master plans that are in the works. And in those park master plans, there are specific calls for sports courts. And whether they're basketball or tennis or pickleball. And so by really implementing those part master plans, it, it will most likely meet this need. But we did just want to call out that those continue to be important to the community. Okay, so in terms of next steps, again, we're in this implementation and draft and final plan stage. We just wanted to again communicate the benefits of the adoption of the master plan. We know this is the first master plan that will be adopted, hopefully with you all's support. And we just want to emphasize how important it is. So one, providing that roadmap that is representative of thousands of data points. It was a really robust effort. It was one of the largest that we've seen in, we've done over five hundred projects in, in, across the country. The second thing is, um, that it aligns with accreditation, the Commission for Accreditation for Parks and Transportation Agencies, which is really a national recognition of excellence. And so this plan is following guidelines for that for future accreditation. It also helps to prioritize spending, knowing where those priorities lie that can help with future decisions. And finally, it prepares department leadership with the information needed so that they can make informed decisions moving forward. Okay, so that concludes our presentation. I haven't seen the yellow light yet, so I think we're okay. All right, I'm happy to take any questions.
All right, questions from the body, Melissa?
Yeah, um, so you talked about the biggest hurdle is increasing awareness. And I've been saying this for years. I feel like the very name Leisure Services is the barrier to awareness. I mean, a good chunk of the population doesn't know what that is, they can't even spell it. And, uh, I mean, I remember when I first moved here thirty-two years ago and, and it's like, what's the park? I was department and learned that that was the name. And I'm like, that's what I'm sure if I'm sitting on the beach waiting for a margarita from a cabana boy. It's not what the general population relates to. Um, and I had a visceral experience of this just a couple of weeks ago. My neighbors who, um, you know, inherited grandma's house, you know, and moved from Madison County a few years ago, their little boy's about to be six years old. And they asked me, where do I go to find out about after-school sports and stuff that the city does? And I'm like, oh yeah, look up Leisure Services. Um, I really feel like we need a rebranding and a renaming of this department to Parks and Arts. Everybody knows what that is, everybody can spell that, everybody can Google that. I think that would be a huge gate, opening up the accessibility of everything this department.
Commissioner Thor.
Maybe, either or not, I like that idea. You said we had eleven percent recovery.
Cost recovery.
Us recovery, but you, and then you said we give out scholarships. What is the percentage or what is, how much of that we can now?
So annually we give about ninety thousand dollars. And just to, for everybody's clarity, what we call a scholarship is technically a discount. Because unlike, you know, if you get a scholarship and you go to college or something like that, somebody's actually writing a check to, to reimburse. That's not what we're doing. So that's kind of why on, on that slide, it's actually kind of shown as a, as lost revenue almost because we are writing twenty-five percent, fifty percent or seventy-five percent of that, that child's participation. Or, you know, entry to get in there. Now, there is a cap, it's a four hundred dollar cap per, per person that qualifies, per youth typically that qualifies for this program. But yeah, and then that's why we wanted to make sure to highlight that on, on the chart to, 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 you know, it's a service that we provide, right? We've never been, you know, my time with this department, which is, you know, over fifteen years, we've, we've never been a department that has been trying to make money, right? We, we know we have a service that we want to offer to people, but we also want to make sure we capture that as, um, you know, that, that's what is influencing the low return on investment or low cost recovery.
So, and, and it might be on the slide. What is that we recover, the cost recovery, what else?
For weight of revenue?
And I get, let me, no, let's get, get that because I know. Well, a lot of the, uh, I know three years ago, well, it had to be longer than that. Prior to that, we did not charge children to go to some of the local buildings, like Thomas Clark Park.
Okay.
And I think somewhere in there, there began the charge. Is that, or, or so do they still use that facility for free? There was, maybe it didn't happen, but.
So there, there did used to be a one hundred percent scholarship years and years and years ago. When, when this body voted on our current pricing policy, and I don't know the year, that hundred percent scholarship was changed to seventy-five percent scholarship because we were actually seeing a lot of no-shows. And, and the kid that no-show took the spot from somebody else is probably just as deserving. So that's when it was changed to, to, and in, in most of our camps, it's only like four dollars a week of camp. If you qualify for the seventy-five percent. So, um, but again, that was, that was part of the cost recovery or sorry, part of the pricing policy that was presented years ago.
And Commissioner, part of what you might be thinking about is that there are some activity-specific fees. So there's some art classes of Linden House for which there is, you know, there's the five-dollar fee for the class. But then there's some other even kind of semi-structured leisure services activities for which there's no fees. And there's weekly pickup basketball at Lake Park. I, I know because I get out of house, you take care of that and, and there's no fee for that.
Okay.
Commissioner Taylor?
Um, this is a great presentation. I, um, walked with all of my zillion of children to, um, Aaron Heard Park. And forgive me, I missed the meeting last night, but the rain. I appreciate you guys coming twice yesterday, though. The Aaron Heard Community Center for the east side is a monument. And so I, I'm always excited for ways of increasing, um, involvement, I guess. So I just had a question about collaboration with transit. Has there, that been a, um, conversation of how you can reach the gaps of one, two and three? Um, and I know we'll probably have to, um, talk to Director Pope about the, um, extension of services to those areas. But has that been a conversation? And I know I see Andrew, I always watch Andrew out the front of my eye. We a lot of money. And I like to speak to Andrew. Oh, has that been a?
Yes, Commissioner, yeah, so, uh, there's, I can't remember what year, how many years ago, they did a big study and they also came out with all the full signage that aligns with the, you know, color coding all the routes. They, they often ask us, um, you know, our park planning gives input on, on some of that nudging, moving, shifting. So it, it's a constant and, and, you know, they've been having suspense routes based on, on drivers. So they let us know, hey, the one closest to y'all is going to have to, you know, be suspended for a minute. So there's a good collaboration there. You did bring up one, two and three as, as the, the zones of high priority. And we want, I just do want to highlight, so zone one, the area with the highest impact, is the project that's in SPOS twenty twenty-four acquisition only, uh, but to purchase a parcel out there. Because again, as, as an apartment, we know that there's no, like, the west side is, is underserved. So, but again, it'll still have to be at the next thing lost or some other funding source at the actual build-out set park.
You got mine.
We got you, thank you.
We also did share, um, after the last meeting in March, um, I believe with the recent or current transportation planning effort, they asked for all the feedback and engagement data that we received. And so we passed that on as well.
Commissioner Myers?
Yeah, um, one, um, I, I, the data is really helpful here. I'm very supportive of the west, the, the number one park, even though it's on the opposite side because it's clear there's all, you know, we get developments here all the time. And I don't like driving out there because I feel like I'm going to get stuck in a traffic bottleneck there, you know? So I imagine if you're there, you don't want to be like trying to get to Sandy Creek Park or Bishop Park because of, of the different traffic. So I think that is a priority. I also, uh, I think the maintenance is, it's a under, it's a, it's a duller subject, but I think that's really important. I was at Southeast Clark Park at the kids playground recently, which is just fantastic. But it did, it did have a like little, kind of had a little grubby feel in places where I'm like, oh, this is like back home when I'm in New York, it feels like this. Not the Athens Clark County where things are shiny. It was more like the things where you were sitting and it just had the bathrooms and everything else. It had my nice New York feel to it. Um, and I, I, and I want to make sure that we keep that Athens crisp and clean and, and, uh, feel to it because that affects how you, you know, you go to a park and do I want to go back and, and so forth. So I think that, that we have to remember the boring maintenance stuff is really important.
We agree and just very quickly is that, um, staff, let us know that too. Is that before we build new, please like, let's make sure we have resources and the money to maintain.
Yeah, our, um, our entire parks maintenance crew is ten people. And that includes playgrounds, pools, the zoo, um, that is a lot of things. And in five or, or four for building services, trash cleaning, it's just, yeah, any support of, of increasing those level of, of services is much appreciated.
Um, the, the math with the one, two, three, um, I would love to see a population density relate that as we move forward with site selection. I, I'd really love to see that, that new facility located to as dense a population as possible. So as many kids as possible can walk to.
And, and of course, what's available will also be part of that conversation. Because there's not, if we're thinking Southeast Clark Park issue, there's not a lot of parcels out there.
Good job.
All right, thank you all, thanks very much. All right, um, strategically teed up, uh, item E in the wake of this is, uh, our youth community enrichment facility partnerships. Uh, let's talk about, uh, potential project locations. And you'll, you'll see this in the presentation, obviously you aware of this already, but, uh, you know, we, we had a direction a couple of years ago for how we were going to spend some twenty, eleven dollars. And now we need to find a new direction. And, uh, that's what this conversation is going to be all about. So good to have both of you here, thank you.
Thank y'all. And again, I want to take the opportunity to, if I haven't already introduced Madri Agati. She's a assistant project manager with us who's been doing a lot of work on this project. Here, she's been with us about three years, but I don't, I don't like to spend with you for presentation. All right, so, uh, I'm going to move through these quickly. As Mary teed up on history, as many of y'all recall, somewhere on the commission, somewhere, uh, back when we started this, and we went through an R and P process, got the land trust as a partner for this, worked with them for many years trying to acquire a site, going through site selection and also with a school district. Uh, that did not come to fruition and, uh, back in October, they decided to, to move on and spend their effort somewhere else with a new program, different programs. And so, uh, we've been looking at opportunities to move that forward and to still try to achieve the initial project statement for this project. And I will say, there's a question that gets asked a lot because of all that time spent with the land trust. Well, doesn't this project have to be in the Westport neighborhood? And it does not, and that was not part of the statement when the referendum was passed. Uh, it has grown over the years because of that, uh, work with that Westfrood Rising. There's some level of community expectation, maybe that it's in that, uh, Westfrood neighborhood, but it is not a requirement for the project to do that. So what we wanted to bring back to you was what are the options available, uh, to you? And there may be some variations of these, you can mix and match things. But we saw basically three different strategies, uh, options here. And one is that we strictly restart, repeat the process that we did before, uh, develop an RP, get a new partner, uh, go look for land, go, we got the partner operated, which was part of the original project statement was, uh, intended to have some sort of partner. Option two, uh, assuming, uh, if you wanted to go with that, kind of dovetails in and it's just talked about. There are two twenty twenty projects that the funding from twenty eleven in theory could be added to or supplement to help those twenty twenty projects that are probably underfunded as well. You could, uh, combine it with the project fourteen, which is the Athens West Park, or some land purchased in the building of the facility is maybe the first thing that gets built on that park site. Or you could combine it with the twenty, SPOS twenty twenty, project twenty-three, which is the East Athens Community and, uh, Youth and Communities Partnership Project. So project twenty-three is basically the same scope as, as the twenty-eleven, but, uh, is specifically is geographically to the east side. Project fourteen is geographically limited to the west side. Those are in the, both of those front statements. And then option three, uh, perhaps one of the things that we just talked about is the need for courts. Is you could build out what was on a master plan back in two thousand and five is the, uh, half-court gym at what is now Christine Howard Parking Community, sooner used to be Rock Springs Park. So you may see that on some of the older slides, uh, but that was on that master plan. But we didn't have money for it. It was, uh, one of the nice-to-haves, in fact, the last item on that plan, uh, to, uh, it would be built as part of that. All right, and there's a lot of text and I've had time to read this, I won't, I'm certainly not going to read it to you, but I, I've explained a little bit of these already. Where I'll start is the time to open, I think is different for options one, two and three. Keep in mind, option one could be combined in option two and three as you could get a partner. Two and three is just maybe where you put, decide to put the project. But there's about, uh, four and a half million dollars in this SPOS twenty-eleven program. Two and a half is allocated right now to project twenty-two. And there's two million in, uh, unallocated earned interest that could be put towards this project, a total of four and a half million. I think that, you know, we've spent six plus years on option one to date. Uh, I don't see that being any faster, uh, next time around. If the partner selected doesn't have a site and we have to go through that same option again. So, uh, I think one is fairly self-explanatory. Two, again, if we're adding to one of those other two projects, it kind of depends on what you do for our partners, how long it takes to implement. For example, you went with fourteen. uh fourteen and you wanted a new partner, you might be back at that six years if you send the partner to help select the site. If you select the site and then bring a partner, it might be quicker. Uh, or if you went with twenty three and decided to build it as the community center that's in the master plan for Southeast Clark Park, you might get one open in about three and a half years. Again, you could add that four and a half million to either one, or you could split it between those projects in some ratio if you wanted to. Uh, and I've given you the budget for those two projects. I think that's a little bit longer than maybe option three to implement, but maybe shorter than option one. Uh, option three, again, that park, adding the half court gym at Rock Springs Park, Christine Howard Park now that's gone. Uh, I think we could be open in about two and a half years. Uh, four and a half million is uh probably enough to, as we know it conceptually, to build that half court gym today. But also leisure services and seeking another two point eight in in grants for that same purpose. And if they were successful in getting that grant money, then there might still be twenty eleven money left over that could be split into something else. So.
And what ways can um SPOS dollars be combined? Is it because they're both youth?
Well, he he, yes, I mean, in the twenty three, they're both, you still have to meet the statement. You wouldn't move twenty eleven money into twenty twenty program, but they both have the same, that similarity in the statement that you're accomplishing the goals of both segments.
And sometimes we've probably seen, uh, last couple of years, agenda items where we may have like a SPOS program on that funding page of the agenda item and then a T SPOS program. And so we're basically pulling money from both buckets. And so that's conceptually what would be happening here.
Because because they do meet the requirements for both.
And did you read, was that all reviewed with the attorney's office in terms of that? Maybe we said that already.
I don't, I don't know about I've had a conversation with attorney.
Just kind of looking worried over there.
I think the mayor reached out to me and I responded.
Okay.
I guess for me, uh, looking at option one, and see I can give off some lack of flexibility. Looking at where I need is our this community to um for a youth facility. And um, although it was years ago when we did that, there may be a lot more partners out there now. So I know we was not got ownership, but my, I, my recommendation, my suggestion, like option one, very because it gives us flexibility. Um, and I like the fact that we can do a RLP and put it out there and see what we get. I mean, I just think there'd be a lot more players.
Keith, he gives a couple more slides, you'll get that. I sure, yes, I I I think he's graphically gonna kind of show the
And I apologize, I don't have a graphic for options one and two because they're very conceptual. Then the reason we have this is because there was a master plan already generated and white purple box in the middle below the yellow one is is where a half court gym uh was originally programmed for this park. And so it would still go there. Uh, the site was, when we did that building, we went ahead and built the building pad and the stormwater features uh to accommodate that in the future. And it would have the same type of programming that it may be different than the programming that was going to be offered by the land trust, but it's the same type of programming in that facility that's specifically listed in the project statement for youth facilities. And just, we did go back and we had an architect already on board uh for when we were looking in and trust, and we asked them to look at this, and they confirmed that we could probably go just a little bit larger than what was on that master plan. Can you see that gray box, that dark gray box in the middle for the half court gym? We we know there's a parking need uh associated with that park, so we looked at how how could we integrate parking, and that was factored into that four and a half million dollar price. So we've got twenty eight spaces by expanding that existing lot that's up by the pavilion. And then uh presumably, if we could work with the uh housing authority and get some additional uh right of way on those uh lots at the corner of Columbus and Henderson Extension, then we could either put some diagonal parking or we could put some parallel parking and and perhaps get some additional on street and still not interfere with what their plans are for that. So you know, said go with June, we think we could have this facility uh based on this concept open in about two and a half years. Uh, again, I've talked about it. I'm not trying to oversell it. These are just uh this is the 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 one that uh came to came to mind for us uh about meeting that the master plan. I don't know if the West Broad neighborhood is important to this group. I just know that we hear repeatedly the question asked, isn't it going in this neighborhood? So that did somewhat uh impact our questions there. And we do feel like we could do it within the twenty eleven budget of total money, including the earned interest. So that would be, you know, our next steps. Next steps, would we bring this in June for your consideration at the project concept, whether if it's option three, if we take away from here some other direction, we could pursue that or come back at a later day.
Allison and Melissa.
Um, yeah, I I I agree with your focus on option three. Um, because of how long it had taken us with with us working with Athens Land Trust, and this is this funding from the twenty eleven, right? So, um, you know, we've got fourteen years. So for me, I would like us to pick the option that will be completed faster, fastest. And I believe it does serve the um youth by being so close to Clark Central, that is, the west side youth, as far as that being um less uh parks. And with the library also now going over new on the east side, I just think it's kind of has a good balance. It's saturated with public transit. And then I think the increased parking can also speak to the driving youth, the, you know, the youth that have the cars so that they're um outside of the um public transit of and just having a a more improved community center here for the youth. I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, so in twenty ten, two to four million dollars went a heck of a lot further than it does today when it comes to building. Um, I I, you know, I don't see the feasibility of using this money for a whole new facility when it comes to land acquisition and facility. Though it definitely makes sense to combine it with um, you know, another envisioned project um or um complete the vision for for Howard Park. Um, so yeah, I mean, I feel like, you know, your recommendation to complete that vision for Howard Park does make sense. And there is an expectation in that community um to complete that vision and also to utilize this funding there. I mean, there was, you know, about a dozen years worth of community input that went into envisioning a community center in that neighborhood. Um, and we could, the school district just didn't want to work with us or the land trust. And so here we are with this money that is devalued at this point. Um, you know, if this project had been started and completed even five years ago, probably that money would have gone a lot further. So I feel like, you know, you you're um your proposal definitely makes the most sense.
Here.
Kind of feel that way too because of the budget, what we could do with the budget that's there from so long ago now is just, it's probably too small then, it's even smaller now. That's halfway between the sort of like the high school, middle school um location. Um, to be honest, it probably would draw more youth than would the land trust um programming that was anticipated. So um, you know, I I'd like to get some, I don't know. I'm I'm feeling positive towards that as actually be up and running. Um, but so this is my initial reaction.
My initial reaction is speaking to the housing authority. I, you know, that was our problem before. We were waiting and waiting and waiting on the school district. Um, we could do the same thing. We need to, whatever we do, we need to hit the ground running, whatever we decide. So I'm not I'm not making a preference now because that can draw us out, just like the um school district did. I mean, yeah, school district did.
Yeah, and to Commissioner Thornton's point, that's why um I was um looking at option one, go, you know, you do a RFP, put it out there, see what you get. And I said, for one thing, it can't hurt us to put it out there and just see if there are some partners out there that's willing to do that and make you get the project done. We could do it. I mean, we don't know that unless we put it out there. So to Commissioner Thornton's um point, if you depending on another entity, can we move forward? How long that may take? Where is the RFP out there? See what we get. Proposals come to us, take a look at it. And again, I'm not sure what would be in that RFP, but you know, be a timeline and then forth, I imagine you can um some up and running. So that is sort of my mindset on that, on 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 looking at option one.
So, um, yeah, so if we were to go with that RFP, um, first of all, how long would it take to even you know, develop the RFP? And then the time to take, you know, take in proposals, and then the time to evaluate those proposals, and then the time to actually design the product. I mean, like, you said it was at six years minimum?
Well, I said, we we spent about six years when we did it first time. We were also looking for sites as part of that. So the RFP, uh, I think the Commission-led committee uh took several months to put that together, advertised.
That's a little bit.
That's when y'all, you generated it pretty quickly. Y'all did what you wanted back then. You wrote, wrote it and put it out. And but then it's got to be advertised, get it evaluated, and then come back to the body. So, you know, it's it's probably at best a six months to get, if everything went really fast, six to nine months to get the RFP back to a vote.
See, what what to your point? We may not have to reinvent the wheel too much if we did more. I know some tough changes when they love them. Well, how much will we have to reinvent the wheel to get a RFP together? Sometimes, you know, we are our worst enemies when we look at these things to get them done. Surely that can be um possible in the fast track. We're still talking, even when we went with option number three, still talking about two years um to get this done. So I don't see where it will hurt us with that out there. Just take a look at it. Yeah, I don't, and then what that cost, what would that be the cost to others to stay out? You know, always want to be mindful of that. Anytime, put it there, get a RFP together, put that on the streets.
Um, due to our time and our volume of work today, um, I see that at the last, on the next, here we are, the next steps. If this is what staff is bringing forward um in the agenda report, if some of the history will be included, how long it took previously, the the different steps. So that'll re introduce it to those who work here then. And it looks like that we'll be discussing this at the agenda, I'm setting site, right? It's going to be here next next week. So we'll discuss it and see what the majority, as as the rest of the commission learns and gets up to speed on this. Because, I mean, we're not supposed to make a decision. I mean, we're sharing our ideas now, which can inform the agenda report and the details that are in it so that as we study that. Um, but but I agree with how you got to this point. It is is for it to be the in the agenda like this, and then we'll have more time to talk through as well.
Thank you, Taylor.
So to Allison's point, I'm gonna go back to, but I just wanted to ask for an RFP amendment. Is that acceptable? Because I'm new.
Well, we would do it, we would advertise a new RFP.
Brand new.
Well, I mean, mission could decide that they want to use the same one, but we would put it back out on the street and go full advertisement period and
But that was my question.
Vina and Karen.
So when this comes back to us, can we um pass like how, like maybe two problems of the, you know, the pros of any of the other options compared to the one that you are recommending, like time and money? Can we, can we just be able to look at that to see how it balances out?
Right, so this
I just want a little bit more narrow.
Okay.
Okay.
It's a little easier to read when it's on eight and a half by eleven paper than
Oh, okay, okay.
But trying to get it all on that per.
So you want that in the agenda report? Yeah, I would like that in the agenda report.
And just on on the options there too, on number two, and again, you know, because you were saying combining it with another project, like, I don't think it makes sense considering what we just heard on the leisure service, um, you know, plan to move to Southeast Clark Park. So what, you know, it doesn't make sense. So it's like looking at the funds for the park. I would be considering for option two, looking at the funds for the west side park, how that would do it. Uh, the other thing is with the uh Howard Park Community Center, I was a little, uh, that that is, that property is Athens Clark County land. It's not Housing Authority land, right?
Oh, okay.
Yes, that's that's
Right away.
The parking on the other side of the street that we were potentially looking at, that was so the the angle parking in the upper right, that's Housing Authority property. The twenty eight parking spaces uh in the lower part of the image, that's Athens Clark County property. So that could be done. The gym is on Athens Clark County property.
And that was in the master plan. So you're gonna send us some link to that master plan too. That would be good to have.
That's, that's, this is, this is, image is pulled, this is the approved master plan for that.
Okay.
And it did not include that expanded parking in the lower right. Uh, we did resurface that lot and we did the community center, but uh we ran out, but we did everything we could. The pool was done in the twenty eleven program because it had, it was the higher ranking priority to the half court gym to the people in the neighborhood residents. So uh, this would be the, the gym would be the last piece of the master plan to be built there.
Just some of this, uh, thought she mentioned about pros and cons. If you, if you scroll down and got some of that line, but option one, it talks about location can be anywhere in the county, partnership agreement will be required. Greetings are records also, I own responsible. They're also pros and cons in there. Look at, again, it's okay.
No, I just wanted to be part of the package, that's all. And 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 I guess um my my thought is um it's gotta be where both kids can get to. Yeah, that's true.
Well, I I wanna kind of hit on that point that you just made, Commissioner, where kids can get to. Uh, and of course, got some weeks to talk about this, but I do want everyone to contemplate what we saw in the leisure services master plan. And we have a piece of the county that's the most underserved piece of the county, kind of on the west side, you know, effectively between the ball and Stonehenge. And so in addition to those kids that live in Stonehenge and live off Cleveland Road and live in the already existent Jennings Mill Road developments, and we've approved two develop, two additional developments, residential developments on Jennings Mill Road. Um, I I would like us to be forward-thinking uh around this, and the money in the twenty twenty SPOS will really only get us land. If we could combine these dollars with those land dollars and potentially even with a partner, because we could look for a a partner if we're interested in that. If we could just get a lot further down the road for a lot of underutilized or or undersupervised, let me say that, undersupervised families and young people.
And 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 I guess, I I guess I'm just putting it all out there now because there's still some variables that are are missing. And one of them that you mentioned, uh, Mayor, is partners. I mean, who, you know, who's out there that that want to partner too? Um, and I, and and that was my only point that if we got to search for a partner, do RFP, da, 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 and what the partner brings to the table, do you still have the bulk of the financial responsibility? Um, that that was my point of just being able to look and seize the pros and the cons.
I will say, I just think, I I'm always, I try to be careful of listing something as a pro or con because what I might see as a pro might be a con. I try to give you the facts and
Don't say which one is pro. Don't say which one is
Which is with.
Okay.
I obviously a lot more discussion, but thanks, everybody, for your ideas. All right, you want to take a quick break, everybody? We'll get set up with the Athens Center for All right, you want to take a quick break, everybody? We'll get set up with the Athens Center for Regional Justice.
The worst part, it'll be like
All right, y'all, we've got uh the uh penultimate presentation of our work session today. And uh that's the kind of one-desired Center for Regional Justice, by teachers, uh, sort of Sandy Whitehead, Paul Kramer. As the kind of site obviously was selected and that'd be on the Classic Center campus. So uh I turned it over to them so they could talk a little bit about the space and the the plan programming. Thanks for being here.
Well, thank you. I just wanted to open this up and say, um, I am so thankful that the people of Athens are thankful, state of Georgia, and all over the country are excited at the work that is being done, being done here in Athens around this History Center and how the community has coming together to support it. So thank you for that. Okay, the next slide is talking about the history of the city's involvement. As you know, that um, there was a a team put together to assemble a team, and this team determined that we were owed five million dollars as a result of the uh the resolution that was put in place, and it was unanimously unanimously approved. Okay, so the recommendation from the Justice and Memory Project that was put in place and assembled that we used the two-point-five million dollars toward affordable housing here in Athens by the way of down payments and elderly home repair. And the other one-point-two-five would go to the bill out of capital money for the History Center. So that has been done. Um, the twenty-two uh upper funds have been applied, but and in November of twenty-twenty-four, the IGA was created. The Classic Center Authority as the agency records. And in March twenty-twenty-four, the commute procurement again process began. And so with that, I turn it over to Paul.
So we just wanted to give you a bit of an update. Um, where we've been, uh, where this new project would be located, uh, who would build it? When would it be available? How long would it take? Those kinds of things, along with the financial planning that is going to And by way of introduction, if you know where the J. E. Dunn office is located, it's actually underneath Grand Hall Eight uh on our campus. That would be the site uh where the center would be located. And we did put it out for bid, and Warner Museums really rose to the top. Uh, Warner would be the one that would do both the design, build, concept, and it would take them twelve months from the time that we actually signed the contract and get started. Uh, Warner was selected on a number of uh bases. Uh, their creativity, their knowledge of school-age curriculum, and their ability to really incorporate sponsorship right into the design, uh, which became very important. The space itself, uh, if you're familiar with it, um, was actually built out when we built out the exhibit hall. Uh, it is across from the pavilion, and so it is adjacent to restrooms that are already there, which would be jointly used between CM and the pavilion activity. Um, and then the Classic Center would keep those areas clean going forward. There wouldn't be rent, uh, there would be charged. It would be a flat rate rent uh that does include heat, light, and power uh as well. And as an effort to assist with that, Classic Center really worked hand in glove with Hattie to launch the very first uh Livin' Town musical. And we were successful in raising over forty-five thousand dollars uh with the very first production. We have another one coming up in September of twenty-twenty-five. How do you want to share a little about uh who always included in the initial productions?
We tried to include um just all local people. This was the local musical. It was the first time um a musical. It was something different to raise money, and it was talking about local history. So everything was done locally, so we wanted to include the local uh director and producer. Like, we we just did a lot to focus on on uh local talent. And and if you look at this, that middle top person that's sitting down, that's my granddaughter. She played um my granddaughter in the musical. It is my granddaughter. So we looked at that and we tried to do whatever we could to focus on local talents. On the next on the next slide is talking about production highlights. We re, we did raise forty-five thousand dollars. And that was all due to all the support that we got from the Classic Center. Um, with them allowing me to come in with my first-time script.
Script.
Script and said, okay, would you allow me to do this? It was new and different, out of the box thinking, but we needed a way to raise a whole lot of money. And so this this is how it all started, when I walked in there and put the script on Paul's desk. And he agreed, and we went forward. We talked about the local cast. We reached, I reached out to community groups, book clubs, uh, students, uh, groups at the University of Georgia. Reached out to whomever I could. And because we were starting from ground level and nobody knew anything about this production.
Nor did they understand what kind of quality this local production would be, but Hattie did an amazing job of reaching out to the community and selling over thirty-five hundred tickets for people to come and really learn about the story of what actually took place there.
And the story was written in a way where people could understand the the impact it had on uh families and communities in that day. And that was important because it was local history. Um, but this year, we are going to, the show is going to open again uh September the twelfth for the public, and we're going to have a show for matinee for students. And Dr. Rashonda Breeden is going to um be the uh producer. Uh, the next slide will tell you that Warner is going to talk about budget highlights. Warner is going to build out this space for nine-hundred thousand dollars.
I'll say nine hundred to a million right in there.
Okay, nine hundred to a million dollars. And, you know, that's, and and we're going to use all of that to to try to get this center if where it needs to be a first-class center. We're going to use that. We're going to make it possible with that money. Um, we going to, with the the project manager and commits, it's going to be about two-hundred thousand. And we are going to, and assigned it to custom work, but it's going to come, it's going to be a hundred fifty, but it's going to total to about one-point-two-five million dollars. Um, but we have been working, we worked, Paul talked about the RFP process. And we also are going to look at naming in the design of the space. We'll look at naming. And we hope to to raise basically um about nine-hundred thousand dollars from the name. That's what we hope.
Hattie, what do you mean by that naming?
Naming is the, from different departments or compartments in the, I'm coming to that, but it's three departments where a person want their name over that sponsorship. Yes, right. And and grants, um, we're going to have grants for the three hundred, it's going to operate, we got an operating budget of three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars a year, and that includes a director, uh, an assistant, uh, and 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 things like that. We got to operate it. We have, um, through networking with another state, another university, we have, I was able to get a grant, even though we're not open and we're not, we don't have paid employees, but I was able to get a grant for archival research because we don't have that information anywhere. So I'm working, we working on that. Um, let me see. So we got that, uh, we working with the Clark County School District, um, with getting field trips there. And we envision with the musical that we are going to make over forty-five thousand dollars this this coming September.
And and you're talking about the field trips for this, the matinee?
The field trips for the matinee.
And then, uh, is this, that's not a typo, about three thousand dollars in tickets? Because I thought the tickets were equaling the forty-five thousand. One point, at one point, it said thirty-five hundred tickets.
Meaning thirty-five hundred people purchased tickets.
And this
Between sponsorship and ticket revenue, forty-five thousand net, that went right back to Hattie.
And then that three thousand
It's a little, it's a typo. It's ti, it's ti, it's ti, it's
It's talking about the number. It goes back to that other slide. Okay. I just wanted to know if that was a new thing. Okay.
So, um, we 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 have done a lot. We also have a a lesson plan. I want y'all to know that with this. So when when they came, when students came to the musical, they had a lesson plan that their teachers could have access to, so they could teach. So it it it's partnering with uh different organizations.
So again, in summary, this is just really giving you the dates of activities that have happened. And rather than me read these all back to you, uh, they're here for the view. The exciting thing to me is that with the musical, Hattie isn't just teaching history, she's actually. Letting people feel the emotion of what took place throughout this effort. And uh, I really applaud her effort and her ability to get so many people to come and hear the story. I think it's very important. Um, this is more to the location and uh. You know, you were asking about the naming, there'll be an opportunity right on the outside of the center. To have it be, you know, someone's name of the center, uh, and there would be a premium for that. And if we go on to the next, you'll get kind of the bird's eye view. This is, if you could take the roof off and look down inside, you would sort of get an idea of how people enter. And then how they'll progress all the way through uh the development, but you'll get an even better. Understanding of that as we continue forward. This is another illustration of kind of a top down view. Um, but I think this is uh more exciting as we get inside. Uh, and this is one of the reasons that I think the committee was so excited about Warner. They understood that there's going to be a base level of this museum. And there'll be a lot of enhancements that want to be made. And Hattie's idea of raising money through sponsorship, partnership, naming, and then endowing those dollars. Make sure that those dollars will be available today, tomorrow, and in the future, so we can keep this going each and every day.
Okay, this um, this center is is also just gonna have a bookstore. But we hope a lot of local authors, we hope to have posters of different sites where people could purchase. And it's also is gonna be a store and an office, but the naming opportunity will go over this bookstore as well. So we hope to have a lot of local things in this bookstore.
Well, you're gonna use it as an office as well, yes.
And if you turn over to the next slide, which is um the Lennantown timeline. Uh, basically, we have a lot of documents already and research has been done on Lennantown, so we're gonna be using that on uh. This little area right here, it's going to be interactive. We want, um, we're gonna have, in the first part of it, we're gonna have archival artifacts, data, and things about the past. So this one thing is going to be our interactive, we cut on here, it's called a tooth saw. A salt tooth, but it's going to be a timeline. And it's going to be interactive for our different students.
And Hattie and the committee were adamant that they wanted different segments of this center. To appeal to different age school children. Um, and again, this is an area where Warner shined a little bit. Frederick Douglass, as the children come in and begin to look at this, comes to life. And begins to actually talk directly to the students. And they've had examples of this that they've done in other museums, which was really cool. It also embodies A I and utilizes it throughout the whole presentation.
This this hologram is gonna be exciting for the children, depending upon the age group, but they're gonna be excited at all to see this come to life. So this is what we want some of the animation to be, even though we have a story to tell, we want them to see it. Our students are very visual nowadays and that will be very creative, but we're gonna have different grades. For a different areas, we have like three different areas, so we're gonna have different views and therefore them to see and to touch. Um, the next one is going to basically is just talking about the different uh areas, but this one is talk. I told you earlier, we're gonna have lesson plans. It's critical to have lesson plans when kids come in and they uh. See things that they can go back to school and their teachers will have to create a lesson plan, they can have that, have access to that online. And we're gonna be hopefully doing a lot of teaching and this, the next one slide is going to be a one around ninth to twelfth grade. And we will have the same interactive equipment in there for their age group. And the next slide is a collaboration room. What we hope to do in this collaboration round, the reason we call it a center instead of a museum, because it's going to be active. If we have what we call truth telling sessions. We will have someone want to come in with a truth telling session and they have documents. Or they have ideas that they want to move forward in a way, say if a student come in there with an idea that they wanted to um. Help cure something because they have been, that family has been involved in some type of medical issue. And they don't know where to go with it, but they have ideas and they have been doing research, we will help them. Create a model for them to use or try to get them in touch with the person that could help them. So we will have that if somebody comes in with historical uh data that. Somebody have overlooked whether they're a child or adult and they want to patent something, we will try to help them with creating a model. We won't do it, but we we won't do it carry any further, but we'll create a model for them to use. We have uh opportunities to improve Athens in this way, we can create models in that way. For for um improvement. And if we can, if we have a five oh one C three already in Athens that's working on that particular area, we would connect that person or group with them. So that's why it is different, it's not a museum, it's a center. Um. Okay, data and research, uh, we. I told you, we have a grant, able to get this grant through networking. And we are going to use that for archival and research because we don't have that much. Research that we can um put here in in this center. We want to make sure the research there that we get is accurate. Because all the research has done, been done, may not have been accurate, it was done by different groups, but if. We want to make sure that we have as much research as possible. So we already have that and we, hopefully if we get this grant, it will, it will come in July. And the last screen is basically, you can see there's a screen and this way will. Uh, is 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 gonna be for sponsorship, but it will. Whoever that sponsorship that signs onto this particular uh area. It will come, it will come alive with whatever person or businesses. That name it and name this opportunity and it will give it like a fifteen minute, they can talk, no, not fifteen. One minute they would talk live before it goes on to the next thing. So we just wanted to give you an idea of what this center is all about.
All right. Hattie, Paul, thank you so much. Do you have questions from the group?
Square footage, um, I didn't see that, what square footage on that ball?
It's in there.
It's less than three thousand square feet.
Yeah, two thousand three hundred.
Thank you.
Yeah, and well, we have the, um, we're gonna partner with different um individuals that we already asked to partner with. And we want to work with them, so if we have something that's truly big, we don't, we can't have it there, we would work without partners.
Here. First of all, it's just very exciting to see this as visuals, a picture coming through. When I think of just a couple of years ago, how far you've come, we've come as community there, so it's just very exciting to see, first of all. I did want to ask you about, you know, I see uh in terms of lo- local history. And you know, back in the the beginning where I was saying American and world history. Is there, is there gonna be more on Athens history than like there's Lennantown, right? Uh, is there gonna, are we gonna see a development of other parts of. A black history in Athens that would make that part of Athens come alive? Where would, where would, how would that be incorporated?
It's already being incorporated, we've already uh working with Warner on on the whole Athens history. I mean, we just don't have all that history formatted what we can put right there now in the uh machines, but we're gonna do as much as we possibly can.
So these are, this is like a conceptual design now and it's still more to go and.
Still more to go.
Yeah, because I'd love to, there's so much rich history in different parts of the community, I could even see that, you know, different things being rotated in there and. Um, so anyway, I'm I'm just really excited about it.
Oh, I was just going to say. You hung in there. You have hung in there, you have hung in there and I I tried to hang, but you know, pick me up as you go along. Um, I want to go back to um Commissioner Myers' comment. And say, I think I had several of us had that vision. Of all of Black Athens and all that disappearing because it wasn't just Lennantown.
That's true.
But you stood your ground on focusing on Lennantown. You stood your ground so those other areas can be plugged in later. If you would have tried to do everything in every district or every community that has dissolved, that have evolved or disappeared. You would not be where you are, we have to learn how to do stuff in pieces and 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 stay focused on what we're doing. So, yes, you're right, but I think as long as it's taken you to get.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the resolution and everything else, those are, this is a next step, I'm not.
Yeah, but but I do want to make that clear because it came up.
Right.
Early on, do all the areas or do this area, slick, ill it, whatever, whatever you thought told me. Yeah, and 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 you stood your ground and that that is hard when people are trying to say, well, if you do it this way, we could do that. But you did stand your ground and I think that we're gonna see all those other areas that have disappeared blossom out of here.
Well, let's.
Yeah, um, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is really exciting, thank you, Paul, for you know, being open to this and and. Uh, I'm looking forward to seeing the musical again, I I I think you should take it on the road. Um, I'm really excited about the collaboration room, uh, mostly because of of what Commissioner Myers and and Thornton brought up. Um, the idea that, you know, so many people have had little stories and um little bits of research that they've done and. To have a place like this where they could come and air them to the public and compile them, maybe get some guidance from experts. Um, I could, I could see those other exhibits blossoming out of that, I mean, I have my own little slideshow of of stuff that I've compiled. You know, and just to have a place where these things, these truths can get out to the public now more than ever, like we're in some scary times and and. These things are being shut down at a national level and it is more important than ever that we on the local level. Take it up and 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 make sure these truths are out there in the public, so. We're doing really important work here and hopefully we can be a model for other communities.
Um, the other thing, I, you know, I am not looking forward to a full blown A I. I'm just not, I'm ready, I'm gonna be ready to go to heaven by the time A I really takes over, right? But there's so much opportunity with A I and the animation that I've seen in other stories and characters that bring stuff so to life. That, you know, again, I'm not trying to jump ahead, me and Carol want to move this thing fast, but I do know that's gonna take time, but I I think it's. Paul, you mentioned A I, I think that is a a huge vision to um. Um, to look forward to, uh, like I said, by the time A I is full grown, I'll be sitting in glory looking at y'all from upstairs. Because that's too much for me, but I also want to mention, and maybe it's always, it's always the appropriate time to give uh applause. Uh, PBS.
Yeah.
Did the documentary. That was shown, thanks to the mayor.
Yes.
At Clark Middle last week.
Clark Central.
Clark Central. I mean, we are already gaining national attention, now how do we make the dollars follow the attention? Is what I'm thinking and I think even for those who didn't see it, you could go online, I believe.
It's on YouTube.
It's on YouTube, but just to know that that is out there, that should also be included in your presentations. Um, I think you did Time Magazine.
Yes.
I think those all should be in your presentations, these national attention getters, when you come before this group or any other group.
Okay, thank you, I will do that.
Yeah, that's.
Right, Paul, Hattie, thank you so much for your wonderful guest, we're really looking forward to seeing this tonight.
All right, last but definitely not least, we've got uh Stephen Bailey with us from Transportation Public Works Record Department. Um, you remember that uh when we looked at a model for North Avenue in November. Part of the responsibility that we handed to the P D W uh was to work to see feasibility. And so they've done some of that analysis and come back and are offering some some options for us today, so, please, thanks for being with us.
Yeah, I wish I had been part of that last uh works work session, I think that y'all, that was a positive and uplifting message and now I'm about to give you some dismal office.
Don't worry, add it to the show real quick.
Very, very. Uh, so uh I'm I'm sitting up here by myself, but I've got our design team behind us, so if we get some technical questions, we can ask those questions.
That ain't bad, he ain't had no bring no backup.
On my lonesome, uh, but so I'll I'll give you some some brief history, uh, we're gonna recap the technical report from our consultant A E COM. That was sent out to you last week. But we'll spend most of our time talking about the potential next steps for North Avenue, so. Uh, with history, I know there's a ton of history with this project. Uh, we just highlighted some of those major milestones here, uh, we were awarded the grant back in twenty twenty two. By twenty twenty three, we recognized the significant risk of not meeting those obligation uh dates for construction. So we've taken a lot of steps since then to expedite or reduce the project scope to try and stay on track. While still trying to meet those community goals for the corridor. And then late last year, uh, we brought forward concept initiatives. Late, our last uh interaction with y'all was in November and y'all uh brought forth the commission defined option concept. That was approved with instructions for staff to return by May uh with this feasible feasibility report and that's where we are. So here is a kind of a brief snapshot of that C D O. The guidance was to implement a five lane typical section with traditional bike lanes and sidewalks on each side. And then at the Loop Ten interchange, uh, you prioritized a partial yield or stop control and loop of a roundabout. Uh, and then proposed a screen wall near Bray Street. And then the design team was al- also asked to evaluate opportunities for additional pedestrian crossings throughout the corridor. Uh, and the team was tasked, he was looking at each of those items and providing a report this month on their feasibility. So I I hope y'all have had a chance to review that, the memo that was sent out last week with the feasibility, we do have design team here. Uh, in case you have those specific questions that I can't answer because I'm not an engineer. Uh, but I did want to get to the meat of what that report was and highlight the main takeaways. So the biggest concern from their analysis is that five lane typical section has some significant right of way and utility impacts that would affect. The schedule, so that would mean that the project will not meet grant deadlines. Uh, A E COM completed survey, uh, the right of way of that concept. We found forty nine parcels that would be impacted and need right of way acquisition. So that would push the top project timeline out an additional, at least an additional twelve months, we went that way route. Uh, we also recently received some feedback from F H W A Federal Highway Association. That the level of change from the original option that we presented last year. Uh, would trigger the need for additional public engagement and that had been factored into the original uh project timeline either. For the wall component, uh, the consultant had some concerns about feasibility or eligibility of a decorative wall being added to a. Uh, to the project grant scope, since that's just not a typical uh transportation project element. And uh it may just need some review by the federal grant administrators for funding eligibility. And then also from a safety standpoint, uh, that's just, that's not something that the design team would recommend so close to a roadway. Uh, just because it would be within that clear zone within the in the public, right? Uh, the C D O guidance for the Loop Ten interchange does seem achievable, so that uh would accomplish, you know, some necessary. Uh, safety and accessibility improvements, uh, it's still focused on geometric improvements to fix some historic crash. Areas and included improved accessibility with the proposed uh multi use path on that southbound bridge over the loop. So that was some some positive from the report was that they felt like that could really be, that portion of it could be done. So current situation where we are now, uh, we. So current situation where we are now, we have an approved design with significant feasibility concerns. FHWA did reach out directly to project staff and stated that the project as designed will not meet the grant funding obligation dates. And we're being told that there's not going to be any leniency from the federal government regarding those deadlines or that default risk that we have of the grant funds associated with the deadlines. The only exception to that would be if a grant extension was approved by US Congress, which y'all have actually been helping us push for. It seems highly unlikely right now that that would happen. So that leaves us with some big decisions to make. We're presenting three options based on the information that we've got. And just want to talk through you, with you through the risks and the risks associated with each of those. So those options include a grant transition, which would be either canceling the grant completely or attempting to convert the grant from a construction grant to a planning grant. I'll get into what that means. The second option would be modifying the project design to something that avoids any and all right-of-way impacts in order to kind of streamline it and try and meet that project deadline. Or the third option is moving forward with the currently approved design, clearly just with the hope that the grant deadlines are extended by Congress. So we're going to talk through each of those potential options, what that would look like. And for each of these, we tried to craft some language about that you could use for an upcoming agenda item. So for instance, you know, for 1A, the action would be to instruct staff to stop pursuing project construction and focus on converting to a planning grant. That's an option that FHWA has recently made us aware of. We'd need them to provide additional, you know, specific information on how best to work. But basically, if the Office of the Secretary of Transportation approves a grant conversion for our project, we could retain the grant funding that we've already been awarded for designs, which is upwards of $3 million. And then we could continue working through concept development and design efforts with that money. And then we just need to pursue construction funding at a later date, most likely through a future build grant, which is the replacement of RACE under the new administration or other state or local funding options. Or option 1B down there, the action would be instructing staff to stop pursuing construction and cancel the RACE grant completely. So we'd be giving up all grant funds, including design and construction phases and ultimately current design efforts where they stand. And we have a slide coming up that, risk of each option. I just wanted to point out, this option would have the least amount of financial risk. We'd stop incurring any additional expenses for the project. It would still mean that ACC Gov would have to find ways to pay back the design work that's already been completed by AECOM. So that's approximately $400,000. But that would be the extent of the remaining local funding responsibility. I want to point out that if option 1A is chosen but ultimately unsuccessful, so if you choose that grant conversion, but the Office of Secretary of Transportation says no, they, if they refuse our request to convert, we'd basically be shifting to option 1B from there in. So that's why if you chose option 1, we'd recommend at least attempting that grant conversion first. And then that adds very little risk compared to just immediate cancellation. Option 2, you'd be instructing staff to revert back to a concept similar to the previously recommended project concept, with further instruction to avoid any and all right-of-way impact in the design. So if we're able to avoid going through right-of-way acquisition, we've been told we can significantly reduce that project timeline by between 12 to 18 months. Get us closer to being able to meet the obligation date. Our design options would be really limited though. So it's not only do we have to stay within the existing right-of-way, we actually have to stay within the existing curb line. And that means if you shift the curb line in or out, right, so in or out, you're changing the slope of the land next to the curb. And that would trigger the need to acquire right-of-way acquisition. So, you know, I maybe naively assumed at first that that just meant we couldn't shift the curb line out. Really, any shift in that would trigger right-of-way, which would, so to avoid that, keeping the footprint as is, that leaves us with something resembling the original four-lane concept, but with some caveats like no pedestrian lighting or street trees, since we want to be able to fit those within the existing right-of-way footprint. Do you believe that that designed to maintain some of the elements in the CDO guidance that you gave us? So that we could still prioritize traditional bike lanes instead of the multi-use path and maintain the CDO-proposed pedestrian accessibility over the Blue Bridge path. I just, I want to point out that that is, this is a very high-risk option still. So even with avoiding right-of-way acquisition, we'd be asking AECOM to shift gears and basically start designing another new project with only a year to get through final design, additional public engagement, environmental approval, and then putting that project out to bid for construction. So that's assuming there's no other unexpected delays or hurdles put on us by the federal government. If you do choose that path, we'd need to continue some efforts to pursue the grant extension at the national level still because there's still that strong chance that the option will not meet the existing or current obligation dates. So to be clear, we could pursue this option, not meet the deadline, and be required to give back any funds spent at that point, which would be a lot more than the $400,000 that we've spent so far. And then our third option, you could instruct staff to continue moving forward with the existing CDO in hopes that US Congress votes to pass a grant timeline extension. I will say many other municipalities have voiced concerns with this grant timeline as well. Many of them have reached out to their state representatives like we have. We appreciate all of you who have written similar letters to our Georgia representatives. We have been in contact with those offices and are hearing that an extension vote is highly unlikely at this point with the recent change in federal administration. So this would be the highest-risk option that we're presenting today. So laid out some options, relevant risks, benefits, and estimated chances of success on this slide. Really just want to hear from you, you know, opinions, understand where you want to go with this. And then staff will bring forward an agenda at the very next possible opportunity so you can officially direct us on how to forward. I just, I'm going to leave this slide up instead of going to a Q and A slide just so we can talk from it as we go forward. So I just want to open it to discussion at that point.
Melissa and Vida.
Okay, so I'm trying to wrap my head around this. From what I understand, the contention about the initial concept brought forward from staff had a lot to do with the roundabout concept and the whole road interchange and the lane reduction in those areas. Would a concept that had the lane reduction in the lower half of North Avenue where it is highly populated and you do get a lot of pedestrian activity, but have the CDO concept for the upper half, that, do you think that would have a better chance of moving forward quickly?
So again, with, you know, with the, kind of going back to option 2, right, revising the concept to be something that tries to take the values from the CDO but put it into something that doesn't affect right-of-way. So yes, you could still continue with the interchange without a roundabout. You could, you could keep what was drawn up for the CDO that had sort of that traditional interchange, but also keep the pedestrian, pedestrian set aside, you know, multi-use path on that southbound Blue Bridge. But anything south of the bridge really would, would need to be shrunk down to something four lanes to stay within that existing right-of-way.
I mean, that's what I would prefer. I mean, I feel like that's the area where you do get those high speeds and you do have the most encounters with pedestrians. And it's most appropriate to go put a road diet there. We are getting more building in that area, and it is very close to our urban corridor.
And I think that design, and that's option 2, which we're still saying is that it's significant risk of not meeting the deadline. But generally, without going into any detail, I think what you'd be looking at with that new option 2 would be you're going to lose the outside inbound lane once you cross, once you get to the bridge if you're coming into town from the north. If you think about it, when you're coming into town from the north, generally before you get to that bridge, everybody's in the right-hand lane, gets on bypass. Everybody's in the left-hand lane, stays straight. That would be the point where when you got to the bridge, you would have the one lane of travel and then you would afford an opportunity for the people on the north side of the bridge to get across the bridge on foot or by other means. And then you would continue the loss of that inbound lane all the way to the river.
Kind of how Prince Avenue, when you convert to.
Generally, I mean, you would have some lane shifting, but I mean largely when you drive into town, the majority of the traffic's on the inside lane. Once you cross the bridge, you know, there would probably be some constraints. For example, when you get to the bottom of the hill at MLK, where you're going to want to transition into some kind of a slip lane or something to get the cars able to turn right without stopping the through flow on the inside lane. But all that would have to be designed. But that would generally be the concept if option 2 were chosen, that our engineering consultant team would work from.
And as a lane arrangement, that's the same setup as, say, Commerce Highway by Sandy Creek Nature Center.
That's right.
Two lanes out, one lane in, turn lane.
I think it's, I'm sorry. I was just going to say, I think from a manager's standpoint, and Steve and I had talked at length, you know, there is still significant risk there. And I think from my standpoint, I would have got to make that point to you. Right now, we're in this thing for about $400,000. If we were to walk away from it now, we've got that amount of data in survey work and design and other things that are still ours, and we could still use those moving forward to pursue other funding options, maybe a state grant, maybe something. We don't have to give back what we've done, but it's going to cost us that much money that we would have to pay for locally. I do think if that were the route to go, you know, you may want to break the corridor into smaller pieces. And from what I've heard, you know, to me, the most important part initially is the bridge and that area around the bridge, and that's where we want to start if we chose that option. We went into the planning grant phase, we're going to spend a little more money. It's still, there's still a risk involved, but what we would do, there are going to be certain hurdle points that we've got to get through at the very beginning of the conversion of this to a planning grant, and I'm going back to option 1 now. And if that were the option that y'all chose, pursue a planning grant. I mean, there are going to be two or three checkpoints that are going to cost us a lot of money. We would slow down if very significantly the design were, if we find out that we're not going to get through those pitch points, we haven't expended a lot more funds, and then we immediately moved to option 1B and we shut it down. If we go to option 2, the risk is still, I mean, we're going to continue to spend design money. We don't make that timeline and we don't get an extension, which seems highly unlikely. Now, instead of being in for $400,000, we could be in for a couple million or two and a half million that we're going to have to pay back. So, I mean, from my standpoint as the manager, I would have to recommend consideration of option 1 just from a community standpoint and the dollar savings and the risk. But that's ultimately going to be your decision to make.
I wanted to add, one other thing to consider is, you mentioned in option 1, you convert to a planning grant, you really are slowing down and you have a lot more time to work on that, on that project. So I, you know, I know that everything we've done since we realized in 23, that, 2023, that, hey, we're not going to meet these deadlines, let's reduce the scope, right? Like, they took the, we had to take the actual bridge replacements out of the projects to begin with, right? And so we keep moving faster and faster. We end up with a rushed project that's a reactionary project. It's not necessarily what you all or the community wants. And so if we continue with option 2, my worry is that we keep going down that route of, well, let's just get something out there. And we keep losing elements of the projects that want or have said they wanted. Whereas with option 1, you have until 2031 to finalize the spending on that, on that planning grant. It's a lot more time to bring forward more concepts, to go out and have more robust public engagement, hear what people want out there. And then, as Brad said, tackle those elements in order of priority, right? Focus on what is the most important thing and get that done first. And there are other funding sources that we have at our fingertips to do that, whether that's SPOSS or TESPOSS. I mean, y'all are about to get a, y'all are about to vote on the North Athens Project next, you know, prioritization. And one of the things that they mentioned was that bridge, the bridge over the, right there is one of the, you know, their past. So there's a lot of other local and state grants, TAP grant that we have currently in a few places across Athens is another option. So I don't want it to feel like option 1 is giving up because there are a lot of ways to use that money correctly and put it towards a good cause. But again, Brad said, that's, that's your call.
Because it is a significant protection and the opportunity of the full construction grant, we just feel like it is severely, highly risky to go that route.
Vida.
First of all, I want to thank Brad because he's been holding my hand through this process and talking to me. But I want to, I want to go on the record. First of all, we knew in 2020.
Three forward.
Three forward. We may not have, we may not have been able to make the 2026 deadline. We knew that then. This conversation should have come to us then and told us and given us this option. And so when you come and you put a plan together and community folk don't feel like they're being a part of it, how are we supposed to trust that even if you went ahead, you would even try to get it done? Okay, we had staff people who were talking to different groups to oppose the alternative plan. We have staff people that spoke to, and we know because I've already reported it to Judd and Nikki. And then you have other staff people who is no longer with us, but was a staff person, said that the people who spoke out at the last, they don't live on this side of North Avenue. So you're putting me in a, I want, I wish that Brad had have told me this, you would have told me this because now you're going to have certain news media printing now, oh, well, they had to give the money back because they couldn't meet the deadline. We couldn't meet the deadline in 2023, and you knew it, and you didn't tell us. And now we're in an embarrassing place.
And I think I want to make sure, Commissioner, it's clear that staff did inform the full body that there was some risk in 2023, and that's why I wrote a letter that was distributed to the whole body at that point.
Yes, we should have had this discussion now. That's what I'm saying. And all I'm saying is, back then, I had a contact that may be able to have helped us, you know, and maybe not. But I asked Ronnie, I don't know if I asked you, but I know I asked Ronnie. And I asked you, Kelly, I explained, give me the letter, the response that we asked for the extension. I asked for that letter and I did not get it. And I'm sure now with the change of administration, it don't matter if I get it or not. But I'm going to not make a decision right now or say what I feel. But I'm, what I'm telling you about how staff has handled this, I had to almost get a open records request just to get to the design. I asked for the, and staff wanted to put me through an open records request. Judd had to step in and help me. So when you tell me this now, yeah, it looks shady. It looks shady. I got to trust staff. And y'all didn't give us the information or we should have discussed. Don't send me no email and it's buried in some, just talk about this. This is big money. So I'm good with calming down right now. But I want to know why I feel like I can't trust the recommendations. Those were facts. I haven't called nobody's name, but if somebody wants me to call a name, I will.
Mr. Taylor.
Well, I think, quick response, I think the biggest difference, as I understand it, between where we're sitting right now, even where we were on November 6th, when the CDO was voted on, is prior to that, what we were being told is, yes, we're probably not going to meet the deadline. But the last time this went through, folks got extensions and there's a process by doing it. And here's what you've got to do, and we recognize that. The shift at the federal level from extensions are an opportunity to don't even think about it happened after even the CDO was done, which has put us in a different position than we were before.
We really weren't at this kind of desperate point last time we talked with y'all. It felt a lot more positive what we were hearing back from the federal government, you know, last.
It was positive because it was the proposal that you guys did.
Just the process. There's several thousand cities that are in this.
I don't care about other cities.
And that was November 6th, huh?
November 6th.
That's why we're in this.
Think it down, better calm down.
Let's just focus on that date.
Yes, think about that.
All the things that happened. All the things that happens.
Let me get, start Taylor, you know, that's my thing.
I will say after the CDO, we voted on the CDO, man commissioner Thornton, we got a lot of bad press as if we didn't know, we aren't engineers, we aren't engineers, we are elected officials. But we got a lot of, and we also got phone calls to Commissioner Thornton's point from spouses of staff who was, you know, me and her are going to have to have a come to Jesus. But anyway, I just wanted to ask this, this simple question. So if we were to either working with option, and I do like option one, I just feel like it gives us flexibility. But because we were talking about option two, and that's when I wrote down what I was thinking. I just wanted to just get some clarification that if we remove the bike lanes and kept the four lanes or five lanes, the bridge is four lanes. I know at the bottom, it's still four lanes, right? Okay, because of the 49 parcels that we would have to acquire, also take out the roundabout and remove the, the screen. And if, you know, because of the homeless situation, if I know the thinking behind the screen, but maybe that could be a conversation for advantage. I saw that they put up a little fence. I thought it was cute, you know, it's right. But with those three things that I just wrote down, where, where would that put us? And I, I probably want to get bad press again, but just for my.
I'll try it if I miss it.
Sure.
Good for you. Fix it. I, I think in, in the option that you've given, the, the one component of that, because the other two, the roundabouts going away, wall, we've said, really can't be done. I think if we eliminated the bike lanes, then we're going to be told at both the state level and the federal level that we've departed so far away from what we originally applied for that we're dead in the water at that point. I think we've got it, we've got to keep bike lanes in the project.
And I think, well, I know that is one thing that Quazan was trying to do was trying to honor the original plan, the bike lane, so the bike people wouldn't get so angry with us. And, and still make sure that the real safety on that end. And the reason I brought up earlier about the difference between North Avenue and Danielsville where it begins. If I would have just known that it was that lower part of North Avenue and didn't go any further, well, the with the round, with it, with the bridge, and we didn't get, I know why I want to support it because the bridge was in there. The bridge was in there. That's why I supported it. And I said, and then we tried to put the bridge in the T-SPOSS 2023. Oh no, you're going to get the RACE grant. You're going to get the RACE grant. No, RACE grant. So yeah, when you keep switching the, the, the scenario, it does look suspect. But I do appreciate Brad walking me through this. He was going to reach out to you too, Melissa. Cause we had talked about it. But, but because it's not just me, it is Melissa and I. So, but I, I try to make sure she knows what I know. But she didn't get beat up like Tiffany and I did on the last one. And I'm, and you know what? I'm, I've gotten so beat, beat up by certain two people here, it don't even matter no more. I'm going to say what I got to say. And I'm going to say that the trust level is none for some, for some staff people. And you know who they are.
So I mean, I, I do recall that conversation in 2023. I was shortly after I was elected to the election and Wayne brought Ovita and I and, and a handful of staff in, and we've recalled that, you know, the clock was ticking and there were elements that were going to have to be removed from the original concept. Those bridge elements that involved railroad and EPA, you know, things that were going to make this project extremely difficult and the engineering aspect like way beyond what we could handle timeline. And it was expressed that it was perfectly normal to get extensions on these grants. That was kind of the regular thing to do and has kind of always been a regular thing. But that did all change November 5th of last year. And, you know, the federal government's been gutted and kind of funding is not being given out anymore, at least for the next three years or so, three or four years. So I guess we are getting a, a healthy dose of reality and I'm, I'm prone to take staff's recommendation and continue with the planning and hopefully our situation will change in three years and or maybe some state grants will, will be made available. But yeah, it was perfectly normal to get these kinds of things renewed. We had two senators that were very much working for us. But the, you know, the leadership at the Department of Transportation is completely different. And, you know, the federal government's pretty much been gutted and there are a lot of communities out there that are in a lot worse shape than we are. I have it lucky, we have T-SPOSS and, and, you know, we, we're in a state that does tend to send grants for these kinds of things. So, you know, I, I think what Brad's saying, you know, take it slow, take it meal, I, I, and, and use the opportunity to get more public input. Because of that rushed timeline that we were on from, I mean, that's kind of what poison pill the whole thing was that we were not able to do. You know, an intimate extended public input process. You often see for projects like that, like the, the West Broad Roundabout, like that thing was undergoing public input for like five years. You know, roundabouts are committed to Chase Street. That, that's been through multiple public input opportunities. But yeah, maybe we get the, the organized and, you know, really intimate public input process that we really need and, and the community based design process that we really need for this super important corridor, because there is a lot of construction, a lot of housing coming here. And I said, I was out there on the corner of Hall on November 5th with my Kamala Harris sign at Roach Hour, five, six o'clock in the evening, watching those cars going through this intersection, peeling off at Hall Street. And I watched a guy on a scooter creeping along the side of the road, stopping at the whole street intersection and heading off to that bridge. So yeah, the bike people are out there. I'm one of them and there are hundreds more coming there. And, you know, we should be glad to have those bike people because the more bike people you have, fewer cars you're going to have on the road. So when we can improve this road, the point where it can accommodate those bike people safely, then maybe we won't have as much of a problem with those cars.
To that point on public engagement, I, I talked in with Quazan, talking with Commissioner Thornton, people feel like they got the rug pulled out, right? I mean, that's, you know, you felt like you were voting for one thing and then it changed. So going with grant conversion, going with a, a longer term to plan, you can really get back into the, into those options of the things that people originally said they wanted to have in that project.
If that's where else y'all go, we're, I, I would imagine that we know fairly quickly. If there's going to be a significant hurdle at the state or federal level that's going to cause us to move on to one B, and we've certainly notified you that at that point. But the thinking there is that we don't have to spend a lot of additional funds to find out if we're going to get it pulled out from others. First and foremost, in my mind, whatever we need to do, we, we got to be able to get people from the north side of the bypass to the south side of the bypass across that bridge. And even if that means that we've got the design work we've got now and we need, if this doesn't work immediately, but there's something we can do in coordination with the bucket of money. One of those projects that you looked at earlier today had money allocated towards that bridge for a purpose. Maybe the purpose is a smaller project to at least get people across back and forth without having to walk on an 18 inch curve. I don't know that.
The bridge was really the greatest concern for everybody. The bridge has been the greatest concern. We just thought we could take advantage of it with the, the RACE grant. And then it was taken out of. And like I said, it's so much hate on, on, from misinformation that it makes you not want to try no more. And so that's the only reason I'm a little fired up today because there was stuff printed and said that was such lies and so much confusion. But, you know, I'm going to, I've always done or tried to do what's best for District Nine. I'm going to try to do that now. If staff would take an oath that they would tell us the truth, nothing but the truth, to help you guys, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Come play, I think, Brady, so that concept we can keep is ours.
Everything that has been done to this point is ours that we can keep.
Okay. And then the only thing right now, we're 400,000 and we have to pay it back. You know, I was talking about money, it gets come out of general fund, they have to pay that back. What, what fund, what funding source that come out of, who has to pay that money back? You know?
I don't know that I've got a good answer, I don't.
Could it come out of that project 14 T-SPOSS since it is planning money that?
And the next thing is, as we move forward, anything that we do conceptual wise into Commissioner Thornton. Got to, so got to be kept in the loop. Make sure we understand what we're doing and what direction we go. Cause I think, I'm thinking about the future down the road and yeah, I know the mayor, I still would talk with Austin, trying to get this thing. It's the him that we have, have a new, a different president. I still don't think we've got the, this is based on what I was told by some of the Senator's staff. So there's neither here nor there. But moving forward, if these things come to us in the future, monies, fees or from the state, let's just make sure that we all don't want to call what we make sure that whatever we're trying to get, we try to get it done. Even I was thinking, well, that September 26th, September 2006 is, that's tight there. I want to ask the mayor, I know, all up in, it may not matter. Do we know one of the other communities that got funding that they have, and that pretty much react the same way?
So, so closest to the city of Atlanta, got a RACE grant in the same class as us, reconstruction of the Five Points Martyr Station. And I, I mean, given the extension of all things, Marta, pay any attention what's going on over there? It would not surprise me. They would find themselves in the same place.
And we, we heard back from at least a dozen, over a hundred communities got RACE grants, but at least a dozen of them were in similar situations to us, where they were not meeting obligation needs at this point.
Cause I, I want, I want them there to be out there, Kelly don't know how to handle.
Maybe, maybe Chris will watch you.
I don't know. I don't care. Please call the type deadline and what we had to produce, it made it difficult for a lot of people around the country to get these things done.
But like I said, we should have had this when the press go around. I mean, that should not have, I would, I would have rather cut bait and whatever that term you used, um, and we thought before, I would have rather done it then, but turn something into good if we already have the designs, if how we look for money to make it happen. That's all. But I'm not making a decision. This is just information, right? Okay.
Yeah, Frank, we will get you something for consideration. It, it may not be complete Tuesday night, but it'll be close. I hate to add another one to your agenda, but we need to make this decision as soon as possible in order to move as soon as possible, whichever decision's made.
Does, are you saying it needs to be special session vote this Tuesday?
No, 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 no.
They'll still get.
All the main event cycle, but I just, we've got such a big agenda, trying, trying not to add anything else, but.
You're trying to get back at us because you know you leave.
But you're just saying for me, July, I'm not here anymore. We need to consider this as soon as possible.
Thank you, Brad.
As Kelly often reminds me in June, it's wait for it. This is what happens to have the gap.
So just before we leave this, it's striking to me that the first conversation that we had in this room this afternoon is about data and the, the data that's driving our desire to see a project to fruition here still holds true. I mean, the, the good thing about being alive in the year of our Lord 2025 is that we don't lack for good information, either about the number of people who are crossing that bridge and who need to be able to safely just get from their home to groceries. Or similarly, just what makes for a safe roadway? We, we know those things, you know, those are, they're facts in the engineering world. It's deeply frustrating to me that, you know, we, we might be looking at this conversion to a planning grant, but that's better than nothing. Just diving a little more deeply into the conversation we're having. Does anybody have some sense of kind of, once we engage with federal DOT, how long it's going to take them to say, yeah, we can convert the screen?
It's pretty uncharted waters. So we're, we are, we could immediately start those conversations. I mean, we can start those conversations just saying, hey, this has been considered even before we, y'all make a vote, but it's not, there's not a clear timeline on how that works.
What you say is uncharted waters. Who gave us the direction about doing?
FHWA, our local contact, said that they've been talking to the Office of Secretary of Transportation. That is one option for us to, to pursue.
The three in the afternoon DC time as well as here and so maybe maybe figuring out if that's an option as soon as possible would be great. All right, everybody, thank you.
All right.